All right, can I get everybody's attention, please? It is 7:00 PM here on December 6, 2022. This is the Budget and Tax Levy Meeting for White Bear Township. I welcome you all. My name is Pat Christopherson. I am the Clerk Treasurer for White Bear Township. And I just need to inform you of a few things before we get going with this evening's presentation. This meeting is being cast on our YouTube channel. This is a first thing for us. We've never done this meeting on a YouTube feed, but that is happening this evening. This evening's meeting is not an official town board meeting. You might see a few or all three of our town board supervisors in the audience, but they are not here conducting business. The town staff and consultants are present as a resource this evening. And the main part of the presentation for this evening is the tax levy for 2023. When it comes to a vote, very uniquely to our township, residents have the privilege of voting on this budget after the presentation is complete. Since the meeting's not a town board meeting, we need to run this meeting with a moderator in place. I would take volunteers to be a moderator from the crowd. Can I get a volunteer? Robert Kermis, who is a White Bear Township resident, has volunteered. Can I get a motion to accept his volunteer being the moderator? There's a motion. Can I get a second? Second over here. All in favor? Opposed? Good. Bob? Take over there, sir. Thank you.
As moderator, I guess I'm entitled to bring my own chair, right? You are.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, the first thing that I have to declare is we'll be following a modified version of Robert's Rules of Orders. We're not going to be real formal on this, but we will follow those basic rules. In addition to that, our town attorney is here in the back. Chad also serves as parliamentarian for the township at meetings. So we'll have him as a resource. So with that, the next item on the agenda is to approve the special town meeting agenda. Now, there are copies on the table in the back. I'm assuming everybody got one. Is there a motion to approve that agenda as submitted? Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. The agenda is approved as submitted. We have the town board special meeting minutes for the December 7, 2021, in that packet. Are there any corrections or additions to be made to that set of minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from December 7, 2021. Those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. All right, the next item on the agenda is to receive the presentation of the 2023 proposed budget and property tax levy. One thing I want to remind people, if there are any questions, if you could hold them till the end of the presentation. Tom does a thorough job and he has a pretty precise documentation in your packet so you'll be able to follow along very well. So if he could hold your questions to the end, and then at that time, we would like you to come to the microphone and identify yourself and your address in the township. We have a recorder that'll be keeping track of all of that information. So with that, I'll turn the meeting over to Tom.
Thank you, Bob. And I know everybody waits annually for this part of the presentation. It's the highlight, if you will. So here goes. How do you attend a concert for .45? You go to .50 with nickel back.
Not getting much better, Tom.
No, no. Unfortunately, that's why I'm a finance officer, not a comedian. So tonight's meeting, hopefully, we're going to help the residents understand the town's budget and property tax levy. And then, as was stated earlier, the residents do have to vote on the property tax levy and then make a recommendation for the budget to the town board. I'd like to start, though, by kind of recapping the 2022 budget and property tax levy. And this is actually a chart that I know is very hard to read, the numbers, but our auditors provide this as part of their presentation to the town board at the end of our annual audit. And it just shows the township's expenditures and compares it to cities' expenditures of similar size. And they used cities of 10,000 to 20,000 for their comparison. And because of the timing, they only had 2020, but they compare it, our numbers for, you can see, from 2019 and 2020 for the cities and statewide. And then for the township, they provided numbers for 19, 20, and 21. And from this chart, you can see that the township, their annual expenditures, were spending about $409 in operating expenditures per capita compared to cities of the same size spending $770. So the town board does try to be frugal with your dollars. The one area that has been creeping up, as you can see, in 2020, we only spent $263 per capita for debt or for capital outlay. And that has jumped up to $507 in 2021 because of the road construction projects and then some of the utility projects that we had going on. It's, the $507 is a little bit higher than the cities that they compared us to that are spending $429. And in total, you can see that the township spends about $961 per capita compared to $1,990 for the cities. So as I said, we are trying to be frugal with your tax dollars. The 2022 property tax levy was just over $4,900,000. It was a 15.45% increase. And a big portion of the increase was our debt levy of $412,838. And the previous year, it was only $197,742. And that's because of the road projects the town has been doing. We've had to issue debt to pay for the construction of those or reconstruction of those roads. And obviously, the investors want their money back. And so to do that, while there is special assessments and other town funds that go into that, there is a debt levy that goes into that. The operating levy is just over $4,870,000. And then, the good news with the formula for fiscal disparities is as we increase our property tax levy, we get to see an increase in our fiscal disparities. So in 2022, it increased just over $78,403,994. The general fund budget was just over $5,198,000. It was a balanced budget, meaning revenues and expenditures equaled one another. We aren't using any reserves to balance the budget. It was almost a 7% increase. And then, public safety continues to be the largest expenditure area. It makes up about 35% of our operating budget. And then, unfortunately for the township, property taxes account for 86, just over 86% of the revenues to balance, to pay for those expenditures. In 2021, the town did receive the Caffer Award for the 27th time. That's the award we get for our annual financial report for the audit. We received the budget award for the 21st time. And then, we also received the popular report, which is the report that comes out every fall that kind of summarizes our audit. And we received that for the 7th time. And we are only one of 10 governments to receive all three of the awards in the state. And when I say governments, that includes the state, the counties, cities, townships, and other governmental taxing agencies like the Met Council or watershed districts. So moving on to the 2023 proposed budget and property tax levy. Our budget process actually starts with the preliminary levy being presented at the annual meeting in March. This year, it was held on March 8. And then, staff, public works and so forth, we send them and ask them to submit their budget requests starting in July. And then, we start working with the town board to get the preliminary levy certified to the county. This year, we did it by September 26. Were required to send it or certify it to the county by the end of September. And that is the levy that they use in your tax notice that you would have received towards the end of November, mid-November, telling you what the preliminary levy or your proposed property taxes were. At the same time we're doing the budget, we're updating our 10-year capital improvement plan. And both the budget and the capital improvement plan will be presented to the town board for approval at their December 19 meeting. And the items that are in 2023 in the 10-year capital improvement plan are incorporated into the 2023 budget. As I said, we hold budget workshops with the town board between August and November. And we come up with the budget and the tax levy that's going to be presented to you, the residents, tonight. And then, by law, we're required to send the county our certified final levy by December 30 this year. We normally get until December 31, but that happens to be a weekend. So we have to turn it in a day earlier. And then, our fiscal year actually begins on January 1. Moving on to the budget. The town's mission is to provide White Bear Township residents, businesses, and visitors with reliable, equitable, and high-quality municipal services while serving as open and inclusive and responsible stewards of the public trust, including your dollars. Total expenditures, this includes all funds of the township. Right now, it's proposed at $21,873,315. It's very comparable to last year. Last year, it was just over $18,800,000. So we're up about $3 million. Most of that is due to capital expenditures in 2023 and then our debt payments. Our capital improvements for 2023 are 26% of total budget compared to 30% last year. And our debt service has increased to 6% compared to 5%. And then, our general fund actually has dropped from 28% of the total budget to 26. And then, the area that's picked up mainly because of some capital improvements that are planned is our enterprise funds or our utility funds. They've increased from 30% to 37% of the total budget. And then, we have some internal service funds that make up just 5% of the total budget. And like I say, that's comparable to the year before. Looking at it by function, you have, again, capital outlay, which is our improvements. They've increased from 36% to 41% of our total budget. Other services, which is a lot of our contracts and stuff with outside vendors, that's actually decreased from 38% to 34%. And then, our debt service stayed the same at 6%. Same with our transfers, stayed the same at 4%. Supply stayed the same at 3% of the budget. And then, our personnel expenses actually decreased from 13% of the budget to 12% of the budget. So kind of going through each of these areas. Again, the total budget for all funds is just over $21,873,000. That is an increase of 16.13% over last year or this year. And our personnel services increased 4%, or just over 4%. The areas that were the big changes there is we did in 2022 add an additional public works, maintenance worker to help keep up with the workload in public works. And then, we also started, or the city of Gem Lake started contracting with us for a lot of their public work services, like snow plowing and so forth. And so, to be able to also pick up the city of Gem Lake, we needed to add an employee. It also includes, based on our union contract, a 3.25% cost of living increase for the employees. And then, our health insurance increased about 5% overall. Our capital outlay, as I said, for improvements, they are increasing about 34.6%. The large part of the increase is due to utility improvements. And then, we are planning a 2023 street improvement project, which would be the fifth year of our 10-year pavement management plan. Going through the utilities or our enterprise funds, we do review our rates annually. The rates are intended to cover operations of the funds 100% and then 75% of the depreciation. As I said, they're reviewed annually, both by our utility commission and then approved by our town board, who also reviews them. And so, the town board will be reviewing the rates and approving them again at their next town board meeting. The water and sanitary sewer funds, they include, the water fund includes a $1,851,500 for improvements. And then, the sewer fund includes a $680,000 improvement for sewer lining. The water improvement is possible for expanding the chlorine capacity at well number five to take out some of the chemicals that are in the water. And then, the stormwater budget has 680,000 of improvements budgeted for them. This next chart, I challenge anybody to read. I looked at it today or yesterday on the televisions at our office and could read it, but then coming here, I noticed it's quite a bit smaller. But as I said, we reviewed the utility rates and made some adjustments. The town board has not approved these yet. But right now, as proposed, the residential base rate or flat rate is going from $42.50 a quarter to $43.50 a quarter. Excuse me. The tiered rates are going to stay the same. So 0 to 10,000 gallons will still be $2.55. If you jump up into that second tier of just over 10,000 to 20,000 gallons, it'll stay at $2.80. The tier three is actually going to change from 20,000 to 32,000. It's going to go down to 20,000 to 30,000 gallons. But the rate itself will stay the same at $3.80. And then, finally, the top tier will start at 30,000 gallons instead of 32,000. And then finally, the top tier will start at 30,000 gallons instead of 32, and it will be at $6.65. The sanitary sewer rate, those rates are all going to stay the same. We're not making any changes to those rates. The base rate for residential will remain at $38 a quarter, and then the volume rate will remain at $5.75. And then finally, the stormwater rates will go from $23.50 a quarter to $24 a quarter. So we left a lot of the rates the same because the water funds and/or the utility funds were paying the 70% or the 100% of operations and then are allowing us to do the improvements that we need to do. Depending on some of the improvements, one year we might dip into the funds a little bit, but then they'll be replenished in the next year. So we don't need to do the large increases that you may have seen over the last few years as we tried to get caught up in those funds. As I said, we've been issuing debt as we've been doing these road improvements, but the debt funds have increased almost 30% from 2022. The debt levy does include, or funds actually include both principal and interest for the three newest bonds that we issued, the 2019, the 2020, and then the 21 improvement bonds. The 2021 bond last year only had an interest payment where now it'll have both the principal and interest. We did not issue any new debt in 2022. When we issued the 21 bond, we projected out the 2022 road project and we issued those, the 2021 bond with both the 21 road project and the 22 road project in it to take advantage of the low interest rates. In 2023, we do anticipate issuing about $3,500 in new debt, again, to pay for the road project that is anticipated in 2023. And that is yet to be determined. In total, at the end of 2022, the township will have $12,740,000 in debt outstanding. That's about $1 million less than it was a year ago. So it is coming down, again, because we have been making our debt payments. But for 2023, it will require a debt levy of $507,227. If you calculate that on a median value home, which the county still estimates or currently estimates at $346,150, that would be monthly cost of about $7.48 for just the debt levy. The township has maintained AA+ from standards and pores for bond rating, and that is one step below AAA, which is the best you can get. So we're doing, in the outside world, the investors think we're doing a very good job with the money. And as I said, we are estimating possibly issuing $3,500,000 in new debt. But first, the town has to, the board has to approve going ahead with 2023 road project before we can do that. If they change that, obviously, the amount of the debt could change or the, or we may not issue any debt. That brings us to the general fund, which accounts for our day-to-day operations. The general fund budget is proposed to increase 8.77%. As in the past, the main revenue source is property taxes, and again, it is a balanced Expenditure-wise, again, very similar to previous years. Public works is moving from 31% of the total budget to 32%. Public safety, which is always our largest portion, is staying at 35% of the total budget, general fund budget. Parks is also staying at 15% of the total budget. And then our general government area, which includes elections, our administrative staff, recycling, and some miscellaneous expenditures, is actually decreasing from 19% down to 18%. Overall, it's an 8.77% increase over last year, which is just over $456,000. As I said, public safety is our largest portion. Public safety budget is $1,987,812, which is a 7.87% increase or 100, just over 145,000. The police budget, based on the sheriff's contract and what the contract group agreed to, is increasing just under 8% for next year. The fire with White Bear Lake is based on our fire contract with them. White Bear Lake, as I will show later on, is trying to get caught up on a lot of their expenditures and is also trying to build a new public safety facility. So we're seeing an 8.86% increase from the city on our fire contract. And then our code enforcement, which is our building inspections and code enforcement, is increasing 6.7%. Again, if you take that median value home, the monthly cost for public safety would The area that probably has the biggest increase is our public works area. They are increasing 13.12% to $1,805,962. It does include that new position, a full year of that position. That position was hired in about August of this year, so about halfway through the year. So we now have to pay for the full year of him, of that individual. And we have about 49% of his time assigned to the general fund. The other 51% is to the various utility funds for working with the water and the sewer. Equipment and infrastructure improvements, that was a big increase of 105, just over 105,000 or 29%. And then we also increased the budget for tree removal. There's a little thing called Emerald Ash Bore that is starting to really affect the township, so we increased that budget by $14,500. And again, if you take the public works budget and do it on to the median value home, that median value home would pay about $22.09 per month for just the public works activities. That leaves us with general government. We actually decreased that, only $9,000, but it's still at $991,182. It does include about a $3500 increase for current and future capital equipment purchases. And then our town planner had retired a few years ago, and we kept that position in the budget. But for 2023, we've actually removed it from the budget, but then that required us to increase the contract services where we're contracting for a planner instead of having one on staff. But it did result in some cost savings. Overall, the general government, if you put it towards that median value home, would pay $11.46 per month. Park and Rec increased 14.64% to $869,300, and a big chunk of that was for park improvements and equipment. Again, they get charged part of that maintenance position. 15% of his time is assigned to parks. And then we are scheduled to do some rehabilitation and replacement of the town's RTV and some picnic tables, and then do some trail rehab. Park maintenance costs a median value home of about $11.02 per month. Moving to the revenue side, again, this chart is very similar from 2022 to 2023. I call this my Pac-Man chart because it looks like the big blue section is kind of eating all the other areas. That big blue section is our property tax levy, and it is actually increasing from 86% of our budget in 2022 to 87%. So a one percentage increase. And then all those little sections were adjusted accordingly to come out to 100%. Largest revenue source is the property tax. Property tax for operations is proposed to increase 9.3%. One of the things, because we've been increasing our levy, part of the fiscal disparities formula is levy increases. And so because of that, our fiscal disparity revenue will be increased to $421,687, which is just over a 4% increase. And so that and the property tax levy, which is proposed at, the two of them together, make up the property tax levy of $4,487,357, which is a 9.78% increase. And again, showing you one of those charts that's really hard to read. The auditors put this together. Again, it is comparing those same cities to the township's revenue sources. And you can see per capita, the township in property taxes gets, in 2021, got about $420 per capita compared to the cities getting 610. One area that I want to really point out is the third one from the bottom there is a line item called intergovernmental revenues. The township gets about $12 per capita for intergovernmental revenues, where the cities are getting $367. And that is your local government aid from the state. We get, we actually got an LGA cut for 2023. We went from $13 all the way down to 12. So, and to give you a comparison, the city of White Bear Lake gets over $2 million in local government aid. So we've been working with our legislatures to try to fix that little problem. So what determines your property tax? There's many things that go into it. The Ramsey County Assessor determines your market values. You should get a notice every spring as to what they are valuing your property at for the next year. What you'll receive in the spring of 2023 will be the value that will be used to calculate the taxes you pay in 2024. And there is a whole process to appeal or question the county assessor on your market value that they've assigned, and it should be in that notice describing that process. The state of Minnesota determines property class rates and also any possible property tax reductions that there may be. Those class rates are then applied to your market value to establish the tax capacity. That tax capacity, well, then the town establishes the property tax levy, which we are doing tonight. And that tax levy is then divided by the total town tax capacity to determine a tax rate. And then that tax rate is multiplied by your individual tax capacity to determine the property taxes that you would owe for the next year. The, as I said, the county would have been out in the probably summer or the fall of You would have received that notice in the spring of 2022. And because of the housing market was so hot in 2021, the county assessor has the town's tax capacity increasing over 16%. This chart shows you how much of a jump that is. So for 2023, our tax capacity is now over $19,183,000. It's the highest it's ever been. Countywide, countywide, the tax capacity of the county as a whole is the highest it has ever been. And so there is kind of a little bit of a lag. As you know, now, interest rates have gone up. The housing market hasn't cooled off completely, but it'll be interesting to see what happens over the next year with tax capacities and market values. Summarizing our levy, as I said, our property tax levy is proposed at $4,487,357. The fiscal disparities is then added to that of $421,687, which gives us an operating levy of $4,909,44. And then we have to add the debt levy of $507,227, which will bring us up to a total property tax levy for 2023 of $5,416,271. And that is a 10.98% increase over the 2022 levy. The debt levy, as I said before, has increased almost 100,000 to 94,000, or increased 94,389. And then the notice that your property tax notice that you just received used a preliminary levy of $5,633,784, which was almost a 15% levy increase. But since September, we've been able to pare that levy down by $217,514. And if you're thinking 10% or 11% is kind of high, this chart, again, may be kind of hard to read, but this came from the Ramsey County Tax Department. It is all the cities and the townships proposed property tax that was used in those notices that you received. And at the time, as I said, ours was just under 14.9%. But you can see there's quite a few cities on here with double-digit tax increases, including the city of White Bear Lake, which is still proposing a 23.2% tax increase for 2023. Gem Lake was listed at 34. They've also pared theirs down, but they're still going to come in at around 22% of a levy increase. And then you've got places like St. Paul at just over 15%. And Vatness Heights is just under 13%. North St. Paul is just over 12% and so forth. So everybody is kind of in a boat where inflation has kind of hit them. The COVID money that we'd received the last few years is now gone. We're not receiving any. In the case of White Bear Lake, they're still playing a little bit of catch-up from when they had levy freezes on from previous administrations. And so those are just some of the justifications for... for why property taxes are, countywide, are going up considerably. A chart on the township's property taxes. As you can see, it's not getting any lower. Between 2023 and 2022, that is a $511,880 increase. And of that increase, just over $94,000 was for the debt levy. As I said, our tax capacity has increased considerably. And because of that, when you apply the town's total tax capacity against our levy, our proposed levy, the town's tax rate would actually decrease from 27.253% down to 26.036. So if your market value actually stayed the same, you would actually be seeing a tax decrease for 2023. But we all know your market value more than likely saw an increase. And I've got some charts that'll show that further down the road. Using that tax rate of 26.036, we would be the sixth lowest tax rate in Ramsey County. Here is what is proposed countywide. You can see Vadness Heights, Little Canada, Arden Hills, White Bear Lake, and of course, North Oaks, which pays the majority of their operations through a homeowners association fee as opposed to property taxes. As I said, the town's tax capacity increased. The median value home in the township increased just about 15%. In 2022, our median value home was $301,100. It is now $346,150. So as I said, if your market value stayed the same, you would actually see a property tax decrease. This chart shows that on a $300,000 home, you'd see about a $25 property tax decrease from the township. And then the higher-end home at $400,000 would see about a $50 decrease in property taxes if you didn't have any change in your market value. Using what the 15% that a median value home changed in the township, this is what your taxes would really look like. Going from 2015, the lower-end home that would have been valued at about $178,894, using the median value increases would now be worth $234,370. And the property tax increase would be about $64 between 2022 and 2023. On the high end, you're going from a value of $357,785 to $468,740. And that house would see about a $124 increase in property taxes. So to keep things simple, here's how you calculate your market, your property taxes. You take your, you start out with your market value. And because there is an exclusion, you take that market value, subtract $76,000 from it, multiply that by 9%. That gives you your reduction. You take $30,400, which is those two, the $76,000, the 9% and the $30,400, those are all numbers the state came up with. Where they came up with them, I have no idea. But anyways, you take the reduced market value, subtract it from that $30,400, and that is the amount of market value that would be excluded from the property taxes. You then take your taxable market value times a 1%. Times 1%, that gives you your tax capacity. And then you multiply the tax capacity by your, the town's tax rate or the overall tax rate to get your individual property taxes. And just to give you some examples of that, using those homes, you can see a home at $234,370, they would get an exclusion of about $16,140. So their taxable market value would be $218,223. Their tax capacity would be $2,182. You take that times the 26.036, and they would pay $568 in township property taxes or a monthly cost of $47. Going on the high end, a house valued at $468,740, when you do that market value exclusion calculation, the exclusion would actually be larger than the $30,400. So none of their market value gets excluded. The market value exclusion gets phased out as your property values go up. So they would be paying property taxes on the full $468,740. Again, taking that times the 1%, they would get, have a tax capacity of $4,687. And when you take that times the tax rate, they would have a property tax bill owed to the township of $1,220 or $102 a month. And I can do those calculations for you. I know it gets kind of complex. Overall, the township is not the only one that does property taxes to you. This pie chart shows Ramsey County is about 40% of your property tax bill. The township is 23%. The school district is just under 29%. And then there's a lot of miscellaneous taxing districts that come out to 8.6% of your tax bill. So we are one of the smaller parts of your property tax bill, unfortunately. Taking those, again, this is based on the median value home. Again, in 2022, that median value home was worth $301,000. In 2022 or 2023, it is $346,150. Taking each of the different areas, public safety, public works, general government, parks and rec, and debt, you can see what their monthly payment would be. And so their monthly payment would increase from $66.04 to $73.78, or a $7.74 increase. If you compare that to some other services that you may buy, $74 for township services, which include police, fire, code enforcement, public works, park maintenance election, and other miscellaneous activities compared to possibly high-speed internet, cable TV bundles at about $150 a month, wireless phone plans at about $170, gas and electricity, depending on how much you use, but anywhere around $165 a month for electricity and $85 for gas. A home security system, you're probably around $35 a month. And then using the current price of gas, you'd be around $53 for a tank of 15 gallons of gas right now. So. With that, once the budget is completed and approved, we do put it out on our website and on our Facebook pages for you to view. Past budgets and all of our financial reports are on our website. So our audit reports, our budget, our popular report, and our quarterly financial summaries to the town board are all available on our website under financial reports. So in summary, we have total expenditures for all funds of just over $21,783,000, which is an increase of 16.13%. The general fund budget, which is a balanced budget, is proposed at $5,654,256, which is an 8.77% increase. The total property tax levy is proposed to increase 10.44% to $5,416,271. That would be a monthly cost of between $47 to $102, depending on your market values, which would be a $5 to $10 per month increase, depending on, again, your value. The county has the township's tax capacity estimated at $19,183,150, which is just over a 16% increase and the largest that the township has ever had. And that gives us a 2023 tax rate of 26.036, which is a decrease of 4.46% from 2022's. And so with that, I am prepared, hopefully, for questions.
Anybody? You want another joke?
Oh.
I want to expand on the lawsuit. Ramsey County and the cities involved in DNR.
What's going on right now is the matter is before the administrative law judge. And the cities involved, municipalities involved, include White Bear Township, White Bear Lake, Hugo, Vadness Heights, Lionel Lakes, Monta Meadeye, North St. Paul, Birchwood, Lake Elmo, Oakdale, Stillwater. And I think that's it that I can, and Woodbury. And nothing's going on at the moment. It's before the administrative law judge. They have not scheduled any hearings. And we're just waiting for the law judge to give us a schedule of when the hearings are going to occur. Right now, there is nothing. It's been very quiet.
You mentioned on.
On the record, could you identify yourself?
Yeah, Jim Seifert. I live in the south part of the township, 2775 County Road Ave. You mentioned on page 15 on the revenue comparison chart, intergovernmental revenues, much higher for the city. For example, the city of White Bear Lake gets $2 million. What was the figure the township receives? And how are we as a township, you mentioned we're going to try and change that? What steps are we taking? And how possible is it, especially when there's a, apparently, I heard on the news tonight, $17 billion down at the state capitol in surplus. Hopefully, we can get a little help.
Yeah, I'll start with the first part of that. We were actually cut. We used, in 2022, we got $13 in local government aid from the state. For 2023, we're going to get $12. The formula that they use is very archaic, if you will. Part of the formula that is used for the city LGA is their current expenditures that go into it, age of the housing market, the city. There's a couple other things in there that I'm kind of forgetting.
I think the biggest thing that needs to be mentioned in response to your question is that statutorily, townships are excluded from LGA. In the last year, we approached the tax committee with a proposal to get the township into that program. We were met with no help. We are hoping that with a change in leadership on that committee that we'll get some more reaction with more push. So statutorily, we just.
Yeah. We're excluded. And the other part that we're excluded from, cities receive local gas tax. When you fill up your tank, you pay state sales tax. By constitution, which would take a constitution amendment, cities receive, again, based on a formula on state, what are called state aid roads, they get an allocation for that. And townships are excluded from that.
It's a good question.
Well, seeing no other questions.
Well, then seeing no other questions, I would move the agenda to the next agenda item. And that is number seven on your packet. And that's for an approval, that's for an approval for the 2023 property tax levy at $5,416,271. Again, Pat mentioned, Pat mentioned at the beginning, this is a meeting of township residents. So it's your vote, it's your motion. The town board is just voting as residents. So just with that reminder, I'll ask, is there a motion to approve that property tax levy? Motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, and that's to approve the 2023 property tax levy at $5,416,271. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, I'll call the question. Those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Next item on the agenda is to approve the general fund budget for 2023. Oh, I'm sorry. This is a recommendation to the, from this meeting to the town board. And it's a recommendation for the general fund budget to be $5,654,256. Is there a motion for that recommendation? Is there a second? Okay, and is there any discussion? If not, I'll call the question. Those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? That motion passes. Item nine on the agenda is to schedule a date, time, and place for the 2023 special town meeting for the budget purposes. The recommended, first recommended date is Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at 7 o'clock at this location here at each hall. And the alternative date would be Thursday, two days later, December 2nd, 2023, 7:00 p.m. at this location here at each hall. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded to schedule those dates. No further discussion. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? That motion passes. Item 10 is for any other business. Are there any other issues, comments? If not, we'll move on to item number 11. And that's to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? We are adjourned.